To start, the City Charter, Section 9, Committee of the Whole states that in part, the residing officers shall name a chairman to preside herein. I think today I'll simply appoint myself, so we will proceed as the chairman of this We would ask Madam Clerk for -- first of all, call being ordered and then asked for roll call.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Forbes.
Present.
Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Millen.
Here.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Ostash.
Present.
Mayor Clock.
Here.
We have all nine members present, zero absent.
Thank you. The purpose of the Committee of the Whole is to review ordinance sections -- of this particular Committee of the Whole is to review ordinance sections 151.110 to 151.116 regarding the unoccupied property registry. With that, Madam Clerk?
We have presentations from the manager.
Thank you. So, this Committee of the Whole was requested by council some time ago, and with that, we did have a group of department heads who work on the registrations, with the city attorney and the inspection staff review the ordinance, and they do have some suggestions for changes. With that, I give you a brief review of how we came to have the ordinance. And the city has required the registration of non-owner occupied or rental properties since 1999. In 2012, members of the council formed a subcommittee chaired by a councilmember Bench to develop a similar registration for vacant properties. Amendments to the ordinance creating the unoccupied property registry were put into place in 2013. In 2015, the ordinance was again amended to add the crime-free lease addendum requirements. That language requires city landlords include the crime-free lease addendum language in their leases and provides them another tool for eviction if three or more quality-of-life violations occur in the year. I would again state, regarding the non-owner occupied and unoccupied portions, it is not a criminal offense, so no one gets arrested for not registering property. And with that, I would ask if Councilmember Bench or Mayor Clock would like to make any comments? They're the two members who are on council for the 2013 amendments.
Councilmember Bench?
Yes, sure, thank you. First of all, the idea originated with the SEIU, who was working at the time with the Ezekiel Project on addressing issues that cities like ours were facing with blight and decreased population and decreased revenue. The current mayor, myself, the late Larry Colores, and former member Brad Ox at on the committee, along with John Stumpel and Clerk Santos, and I believe that was everyone from staff. But the idea was to, you know, create a registry and have another, you know, tool in our toolbox to address the blighted properties that we were seeing because we were facing, you know, a serious foreclosure crisis throughout the whole country. We had a lot of resources that were dedicated to dealing with those problems that were created by those homes, and we wanted to create some way to track the properties that we weren't able to tear down with the hardest-hit funds and the TARP grant funds that we had at the time because we were in the process of demoing a lot of the vacant homes. And this was kind of an idea to, at least, keep track of what was left behind that we couldn't maybe get with the grant funds, and it's certainly not a perfect solution, but it seems like it's worked so far, so.
I would add that because, as Councilwoman Bench mentions, there are a lot of foreclosures. There are hundreds and hundreds of foreclosures going on at that time. We were getting many purchases by people who are absentee landlords or simply absent who had purchased properties here, multiple properties, and do nothing with them but sit on them. The unoccupied portion of the ordinance was necessary to try and get a handle on those unoccupied properties. The blight was increasing as a result of no one paying attention to those even though they purchased them. The fire department was having problems, police department having problems, and we had to get a handle on who they were owned by, who was the person responsible to, we could deal with them, and then some form or manner of addressing those absent -- excuse me, vacant properties. So it was a very important need, and there are still properties that go into foreclosure. There are still properties that people do not do anything with and will sit on. So the ordinance was valid, an important tool at the time, and I believe it still is. Any other this time?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also add that a number of other cities in Michigan, and I'm sure throughout the country, have a vacant property registration or vacant property ordinance. With that, I will turn it over to the city attorney, who has some suggestions regarding changes in the ordinance.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Morales. I've been working with several members of city staff to put together additional amendments to the ordinance that will help to clarify certain language as well as expand some areas. Our suggested amendments will include amending the language to include the registration of improved unoccupied property in all zoning classifications, not just residential. Amending the definition of a quality-of-life violation, and again, that falls under the crime-free lease addendum language, and currently, a quality-of-life violation occurs when someone has been cited for a violation of the law. We're proposing that the amended language will change that to a conviction, or plea, or a finding of responsibility. We're also recommending amending the unoccupied property registry to include a new exception to the registry. That would be for individuals to be exempt for the first 12 months following their purchase of property, so long as they are actively working to rehabilitate it. Active rehabilitation would then be evidenced by the owners obtaining of the permits necessary to rehabilitate the property. And we're also recommending adding a certificate of compliance section. Owners of rental or vacant property that contains a structure that is one story -- sorry, more than one story and less than 10 feet from the public right-of-way must have all roof-mounted structures and exterior walls inspected by a licensed architect or engineer at least every five years. Upon successful completion of that inspection, a certificate of compliance shall be issued, and the structure then would not be able to be occupied until that certificate of compliance is in place.
Thank you. Any councilmembers have questions of our city manager or city attorney?
If I'm interpreting what you said correctly, when this would include all zoning classifications, we have different kinds of vacant property in the city, such as people are doing agricultural with it, like a community garden, or simply a property that is industrial in nature, M1 through M3, for instance, B1s, but don't have structures on them. These would fall under being unoccupied properties to register?
Our recommended amendments would tighten up that language to improved unoccupied properties, so properties with structures on them.
Permanent structures, or does this include storage sheds that are not permanently attached to a building, or a fence? A fence is considered a structure under some of our zoning, so how might those cases be viewed?
And I'll have John talk about the enforcement end of.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I would consider that as an enforcement policy would be any improvement that is a building, not a fence, but it would have to be a building. Even if it was a shed, the, I guess, anything that would require a permit, so it's anything larger than 200 square feet, anything that requires a permit would be considered an improved property.
Okay. Any other -- Councilmember Balls?
Are we gonna put a timeline? I mean, you're gonna give them a year, two years, three, four, five years? I mean, how long is it gonna take? I mean, should be a certain length of time, shouldn't it?
With regard to the proposed new exemption, that would only be valid during their first year of ownership, so if it's still unoccupied in their second year of ownership, they would be required to register regardless of whether they had a permit pulled or not.
So you're saying, that means it's only two years to get it together, or is it more? Is it gonna be a permanent timeline? If somebody buy a house, it's unoccupied, they don't live in a house, it's unoccupied, how long are we gonna give them to keep it unoccupied?
Well, if they're not doing anything with the property, if they have pulled no permits on it, they have to register it immediately. If they are actively working to rehabilitate it, the language of our proposed amendment would be that they would be exempt for one year only, and thereafter, they would be required to register it.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, let me understand. If I buy a house today, I've got one year to get it up to code, and I have to -- that means pulling work permits and having everything in operation within that year. Anything after that year is considered unoccupied?
It would be considered unoccupied in either case, but we're proposing to carve out an exemption for people who are new owners of the property and are actively working to rehabilitate it.
So in other words, I've got to be working on my property. If I'm not working on my property, it's just land dormant. And by land dormant, it is susceptible to arsenic, somebody setting it on fire, breaking and entering it, taking the pipes out, like they did with a lot of the houses that we demoed. Okay. I just wanna get an understanding. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah. So, yeah, the question I have too, as we've mentioned before in the past, that if the water was hooked up, that we considered it to be occupied. Is that still gonna be the case? Wasn't that mentioned before?
I don't think that's true.
Just because a building has water doesn't mean it's occupied. It's either someone's using it for its intended purpose or not.
Yeah, I can't remember if that was an email that we had received or something that we talked about, because I had a question about that too, because sometimes the pipes are ripped out, so.
It's certainly an indicator of if it is occupied, because we can monitor water usage.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
You have to have water for it to be occupied, but I don't think the reverse holds.
Correct. And I guess that would lead to my next question, because you talked about the permits that would be pulled. Exactly what permits are we looking for? Would be a building permit, electrical permit?
Would be any work that requires a permit, under any of the construction codes, building, plumbing, mechanical, or electrical.
And the needs may vary depending on the state of the house that's purchased.
Okay, so there's really no requirement of how many permits that have to be pulled, it's just that permits are being pulled to do the work?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any others?
Could you tell me a little bit more about the certificate of compliance? So it's above one story and within, with how many feet of the curb?
10 feet from the right-of-way.
So that's a new requirement, correct?
This would be a proposed, brand-new language, and the part of the reasoning and consideration behind it was the issues, I think multiple times we've had within the last year or two years, with parts of buildings falling into highways.
So in other words, it's a proactive ordinance where we require the owners of properties to actually look at their buildings, even though they're way up there, to take preventative stops so that they don't end up falling into the street or on the sidewalk?
But that, but we don't hold that same consideration for land banked-in properties, correct?
Correct.
Interesting.
Anything else? I can comment on one thing. We gotta remember there's basically three kinds of properties: unoccupied, non-owner occupied, and owner occupied. Owner occupied, we're not addressing them here because they're owner-occupied, they have someone living in them, they have to be to code. If they aren't to code, we deal with those as code violating. If they are non-owner occupied, we have an ordinance in our registry for those. What we did not have before was the ones where those two categories didn't exist. That's why this was put into effect, so that we could deal with those who were not owner-occupied nor that were unoccupied, and they were simply vacant. So our ordinances work together because of that very effectively, and that gives the ability to the scenic and the code enforcement officers to follow a pattern in dealing with these different properties in whatever stage they're in. And that's the value to having this one as well. The other thing I want to point out is, too many people have been calling this, the fee a tax. This is not a tax. It is a fee for the enforcement costs that the city has put through in having to deal with these properties. So anybody who calls this a tax is mistaken. It is not a tax. Anybody else? Councilman Ostas?
Yeah, so I just want to get a little bit more clarification on the exemption piece that you're talking about. Could you just kind of read that a little bit again, because we don't have it in front of us, so of course I can't see it, so.
And I'll read your proposed language.
Thank you.
An owner or controller of unoccupied property -- oops, that's wrong. An owner or controller of unoccupied property shall be exempt from registration under this section for the first 12 months following the owner's purchase of the property, so long as the owner is actively working to rehabilitate the property for use and occupancy. Such rehabilitation shall be evidenced by the owner or controller obtaining the necessary permits for structural, electrical, mechanical, or similar work.
And then there was also a 10-foot setback piece on that too, that we were just talking about that John spoke about.
That's a separate section that would apply to both unoccupied properties as well as non-owner occupied properties, and that's dealing specifically with structures that are two stories or more and within 10 feet of the right-of-way. Basically, it's an assessment of their external structure.
Right.
To make sure that it's safe and it's gonna protect the public.
Okay. So if we then find that the building has some sort of structural issue with it, and it's the two-story under this ordinance, what would be the next steps that we would take?
So by having a licensed professional architect or engineer look at the building, they'll be required to propose repairs to the structure so that it is safe, and you can reasonably expect it to be safe for the five years, which is the term of the certificate.
Okay. At any point during this process, would we use any parts of our dangerous building I'm technically hearing that there's a problem with the building.
I guess I'm not following you. How are you?
Okay. So what I mean by that is underneath our dangerous buildings ordinance, we have sections of the ordinance that can call for a hearing, where we bring the owner in, and we try to figure out how we're gonna make that building make -- how do we make the building safe again? So that's the part that I'm trying to get to, because I also have a question too, on this specific ordinance, is that if we've had hearings in the past, I would like to know when those hearings took place and what were the results of the hearings before my seat on council.
Is that with regard to a specific building? Because there's been numerous hearings held under the dangerous building ordinance.
Okay. I was just wondering if that would be an approach that we could take in this particular case too, because we're trying, in this particular case, we're saying that a building is not safe, and we're trying to make it safe again.
And I think there's a bit of a difference between the two ordinances, because this is requiring a proactive step on the part of the owner. And the dangerous building ordinance really comes into place when city staff finds that the building is dangerous, and the hearing is really a show cause hearing that provides the owner the opportunity to show cause as to why their building should not be found to be dangerous.
Because in that situation, the building's already in a point of disrepair. You know, it's already to a point where it has to be fixed.
If I may, the fact of disrepair does not necessarily mean it's dangerous.
Correct.
And that's one of the things you gotta realize. These ordinances work together. If the inspection division gets a complaint, goes out and inspects a building, such as the burned-out one, and now it's dangerous because it's what's called an attractive nuisance, they will act under the dangerous building ordinance. It could be another element, such as the entire back porch or front porch has fallen down, or that there's holes throughout the building, that it's accessible to people who shouldn't be going in there. That might become a dangerous building ordinance, invite, invoke that ordinance. That could happen whether or not it's a vacant property. It could happen with an occupied property, including a non-owner occupied. It could happen with all three of them.
Sure.
So that's what needs to be understood. These ordinances work together, depending on what is found and the reason for the registration, is to at least know who to contact, to give notice to, for example, if it's a dangerous building. If we have no one to contact, how do we give them notice? How do we give them a hearing?
True.
So part of this is an interplay between different ordinances that serve the same purpose of keeping houses, buildings, structures in good repair, and with us having knowledge of who and where these people are that own them or occupy them.
And what could ultimately happen under the certificate of compliance language is the owner retains an engineer or architect who does a study, who finds that there's deficits that need to be fixed, and the owner does not. That may ultimately kick them into the dangerous building process whereby they start beginning receiving notices. But again, it depends on the material deficits of the building and whether it meets the level of dangerous building.
Any other questions?
Why?
Go ahead, Councilman.
So, help me understand this. When people purchase a home, refurbished or have to do work in homes, do they know what needs to be repaired? Are they aware of this ordinance when they buy it? That's what I need to know. When I buy a house, say I buy a house, I bought a house seven years ago, when this ordinance was out in orbit, and then all of a sudden, the ordinance passed, did I get notification that this was the new ruling and that I needed to work on my houses?
Through the process, you know, for example, tonight at our regular council session, we have the introduction of ordinance amendments to two ordinances. That is effectively the public notice of those amendments coming down the pike, just like their adoption is adopted at a public meeting of council. They get published on the city website, they're available in the city clerk's office and throughout city hall, but do we otherwise publish in a newspaper or send letters to every owner in the city that might be affected by those ordinances? No, but neither does the state of Michigan.
No, no, no. I just wanted to know, when I purchase a house, am I aware that this ordinance is in place?
I think what you have to look at is, in addition to what Amy said, when we pass the ordinance as they are posted, but you can't absolve a property owner of responsibilities with the, "I was not notified when I bought the house." For instance, I had trees trimmed in the right-of-way at the house. That requires a permit. No one told me it required a permit. I knew for some reason, but homeowners should know that when you're doing work, you have to check on these things. Are you required to have a lot of different permits? Right-of-way permits if you're in sidewalk, work done. There are a lot of requirements in the city that property owners need to avail themselves of the rules when they're purchasing and when they're having work done.
Councilmember Bench?
Thank you. I think a clerk may be able to answer this question for me, but I believe at the time the ordinance was passed, once we began implementing it, I don't, I'm not sure it's still common practice, but I know that people received letters initially when the ordinance was rolled out, or at least I believe people did, from the clerk's office, letting them know at one point. Perhaps I'm wrong, but I remember, or maybe it was just the late notice that they received, I don't know. But I had heard at one point when we had rolled it out.
I don't think we did. Not to every individual property owner, I don't think we did.
No, okay.
I think it went out to the landlords, different groups that own property. I think we did that.
Okay. I knew there was some mailing or some effort on our part to at least make some people aware of it.
I believe we maybe did a press release on it in the news.
Okay.
Yeah, I would add too, I don't think we mentioned in the background that, I think the mayor and councilmember Bench did a good job of reviewing all that, but at the time, if I recall, we did also receive a lot of citizen complaints regarding the vacant property. That was one of the catalysts for setting up these ordinances, registrations, and modifying them. So there was a lot of input from neighborhood associations at the time that this was considered and developed in pass.
In fact, I believe there was quite a bit of citizen attendance of the committee meetings.
Councilwoman Mills?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that sometimes we've heard complaints or comments about this ordinance, and I don't want us to confuse parts of the ordinance with how it's enforced. The first step is not, "You owe us $150," or "You're in violation." You get a letter detailing an alleged violation or a complaint about a property, and it goes from there. And the letters explain clearly timetables to respond, you know, what the required or requested action is. So it doesn't jump right to like step three or four. It has an enforcement process, which is pretty clearly laid out, and as a property owner in the city of Saginaw, I would say, once you've got that letter, you inquire very quickly what are the proper steps to take.
I want to follow up on the comments by city manager Morales. It is 100% correct that the person is responsible for knowing the laws. That is their responsibility, and if they don't check it out, that's their risk. If you didn't know that it was illegal to drive drunk and you do it, that's not a defense. You're driving drunk, and you're gonna be charged. And here, if in fact you buy a house and you don't pay attention to its condition or to what the rules or regulations are, you're in violation. Which, Ms. Lusk, that brings up a question I have, and it may be in your proposal already, but what about the person who buys a home, does not give any kind of notice of it being vacant, waits a couple of years, is cited, and then says, "I want my year exception." How do we handle that?
So if they bought the home, they didn't register it, two years go by, and all of a sudden, they're gonna start working on it, but in the meantime, they get a notice from us that says, "You gotta register it." It probably would be relatively easy to discern whether the property was vacant during those two years. One, was there an active water account? Two, we look at things like homestead percentages. We look at the condition of the property. You know, it's pretty, a lot of times, it's very obvious when a property sits vacant for a number of years. It tends to become worse than better very quickly. So we'll look at all that stuff, and I think, I don't know if Janet has anything to add to that, but we'll look at all of the information that we have and make a determination on a case-by-case basis.
It would be safe to assume then that if that house, for example, two years later, they want the exception used to determine that it's been vacant or that they haven't registered, the bottom line is, they don't get another year.
No.
All right. Councilman Mills?
Yeah, it just occurred to me, I noticed in the ordinance, we talk about securing a building. Does that include accessory buildings on the same property?
It does.
Okay.
Any other councilmember questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Can you just remind me of how much the registration fee is for taken properties?
It's $150 per year.
And if somebody violates a code or doesn't pull a permit, how much is that?
There's provisions in the construction codes where if you do work without a permit and you get caught, generally, generally, we try not to be mean, but there are provisions where if there's a $100 permit for putting a water heater in, we catch you, the permit fee goes from 100 to 200.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a double permit fee.
Any other questions? I have a follow-up. What about a landlord that owns 10 properties, or owner that owns 10 properties and they're vacant? Everyone has to be registered, correct?
By address, correct, separately.
So any residents that is not occupied at all is subject to the registration?
That, yes, and in fact, under the proposed changes, that would include vacant That, yes, and in fact, under the proposed changes, that would include vacant commercial structures as well.
Good. Anything else?
One more question. Oh, yes. Yeah, so some of the changes that, that they're proposing right now is there's that 12-month period when we, when they buy the house. What do we do with our current homes that are purchased that, how are we going to handle that? Because we, part of the reason why we're here today is we all, we have, and they're here in the audience listening, is that we have, we have to figure, how is that going to work, I guess? That's my question. What do we do with that?
There's, I don't think there's any intent to grandfather anything. It'll, it'll be a new exemption that'll be implied going forward.
Maybe I should specify grandfather. Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else? Thank you. Mr. Manager, is there anything else?
Nothing further from here.
We would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Just moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to open the regular meeting of the city council of Saginaw by prayer with the prayer led by John Mill, Councilman John Mill, and the Pledge of Allegiance also led by Councilman Mill.
Please join me if you choose. Heavenly Father, guide us in our deliberations this evening. Lend us your wisdom to choose well. Protect those who work and make us safe and secure in our daily lives. We ask you especially that you watch over the family of our departed friend and colleague, Greg Branch, who served this city and her citizens in life. Strengthen his wife, Ann, and children, Grace, Samuel and Ben, in this time of grief. Let them know that as we shared their joy in Greg's presence, we share their loss in his absence. Bring them and our city the peace Greg now shares with you. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you, Councilman Mill. That was very helpful. Madam Clerk.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Forbes.
Present.
Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Member Bench.
Present.
And Pro Tem Moore.
Present.
And Sherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Millen.
Present.
Councilmember Falls.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache.
Present.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Nine members present, zero absent.
Thank you. For the audience, I'd like to say good evening, first of all, because this is a public meeting. We ask that all members of the audience, please remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting or otherwise disrupting the meeting. Also, this is a good time to remind everyone, and perhaps again, council members, if not already done, to please turn off or silence all electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We're at announcements. I do have one. The council communication for consent agenda item number 13 has been revised with a change to the vendor. It is now Constellation New Energy Gas Division LLC rather than Interstate Gas Supply Incorporated.
Thank you.
That change has been made. Next on our agenda, we have a proclamation recognizing Leola Wilson for her years of service as president of the Saginaw NAACP.
Welcome, Ms. Wilson. And we're going to, council, Mayor Pro Tem Brenda Moore has agreed to read the proclamation at this time. You may stand. Yes, please, please do.
It is truly my privilege and my honor to do this for my other mom. City of Saginaw proclamation. Whereas on behalf of the Saginaw City Council and the citizens of our city, it is our privilege to extend this proclamation to Leola Wilson for 50 years of dedication and commitment to the citizens of the community and as a member, and as a member, officer and president of the Saginaw NAACP, and whereas Ms. Wilson is Saginaw native, joined NAACP 50 years ago. During that time, she served as Assistant Secretary, Secretary and became President in 1998. Leola Wilson legacy in the fight for equality has led the local NAACP branch to partner with churches, pastors, the nation, the National Pan- Atlantic Council Division, nine leagues of women voter, united auto workers and other nonpartisan groups and organizations who share the same mission as the NAACP. Whereas Leola Wilson has advised, has been advocate for those who have been discriminated against, fought for those who have suffered injustice, educational voters and in the political process, and has sought to enforce the laws that secure civil rights. Wilson is a Diamond Life member of the NAACP, which is the highest status of membership in the national organization. And whereas Leola Wilson's commitment to the NAACP has led to serve in many key roles in the national organization, including serving as the aerial director of the Michigan Conference State Treasurer and as a member of the nominated committee of the National Board. Ms. Wilson was awarded the NAACP Presidential, President of the Year Award, and under her leadership, the Saginaw branch received a national award for both youth and adult memberships and their activities. Whereas Ms. Wilson has set the example for others as a, as a exemplary, as an exemplary citizen, whose good work has, and dedication helps to improve the quality of life for many citizens. We honor and recognize you this day for the deep commitment, Ms. Wilson, to empower, encourage and to enlighten the citizens of Saginaw throughout the Great Lakes, throughout the Great Lakes Bay region. Whereas, who, this is a lot of stuff, mama. Whereas, therefore, be it resolved, I Floyd Clark, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, on the behalf of my fellow councilmen and the citizens of this community, do hereby extend their appreciation for all of, for all of your, for all of your esteemed appreciation, gratitude to Leola Wilson for the, for the positive impact you've made in our community over the past 50 years. And as an active member and president of the Saginaw chapter of the NAACP, we congratulate Ms. Wilson and extend our best wishes for a continuing success in all your future endeavors. And hereby, therefore witness, I hereby set my hand and cause of the seal of Saginaw to be affixed this day, the 18th of February in the year of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, 2019. Floyd Clark, Mayor Brenda F. Moore, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, Jamie Forbes, John Mill, Millam, Bill Oster and Autumn Sherzer, Tim Morales, city manager. I just want you to know, that was a whole lot of stuff to read. Can you step up to, can you step up? Love you.
Hope you love you and thank you.
Where's the man when we need him?
Please, if you'd like to say a few words, Ms. Wilson, we'd love to have, hear from you.
Yes, we would.
Somebody said something they shouldn't have. I heard that. I'm, I'm, I'm just going to say, thank you so much to the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, to the city manager, city clerk, all the staff that I often give of my time and work with you and fuss with you and whatever we need to do. Thank you so much for your recognition of myself, but most importantly, as of the NAACP, that you understand what they try to do in the community. I hope that came through loud and clear during my time, and I'm sure it will continue to, believe me. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here and for accepting this award. I think it's well, well earned. Thank you so much. We also have another proclamation.
Yes, Mayor, we do. It's recognizing the 80th anniversary of Family First Credit Union.
And Fran Gibbou, would you care to step up or any others that you'd like up as well? It's, they're shy, is that it? Okay. Well, we know you're not, so we like you there. All right. And it's my privilege to, to read the city of Saginaw proclamation to the Family First Credit Union as well. Whereas Family First Credit Union was established in 1939 as the Saginaw Municipal Employees' Credit Union, serving employees of the city of Saginaw. And whereas Family First Credit Union originally located in the lower level of city hall, expanded from that tiny basement setting to multiple branch offices throughout the Saginaw area, including branches in Freeland and Cottrell Township. And whereas in 2003, the credit union was approved for a community charter and changed its name to Family First Credit Union, membership is now open to all who live, work or worship in Saginaw Bay, Midland and Genesee Counties. And whereas Family First Credit Union began in 1939 with a mere 121 members. Currently, Family First serves over 6,000 members with reported $75 million in total assets. And whereas Family First Credit Union has grown from its humble beginnings in 1939 and has evolved today as a primary financial institution with a broadened range of services to meet all the financial needs for citizens throughout the city of Saginaw and the Great Lakes Bay region. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I Floyd Clark, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow council members, do hereby congratulate and commend Family First Credit Union on 80 years of serving the Saginaw community. Further, I urge all citizens of Saginaw to recognize, honor and celebrate the outstanding commitment and contributions that Family First Credit Union has made to the city of Saginaw. In witness, witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this 18th day of February in the year of our Lord, 2019. Signed by myself Floyd Clark, Mayor, and councilperson's Brenda F. Moore, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, Jamie Forbes, John Mill, Bill Oster and Autumn Sherzer, as well as Timothy Morelles, city manager. Please step forward. We'd love to.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Boy, thank you.
Would you have the care to say a few words, Fran?
Oh, you know I do, Floyd.
We'll give you the podium. We won't gamble you too quickly.
I know you've got a busy night ahead of you, so I'll make it short and sweet. On behalf of the Family First Credit Union Board of Directors, Committees and Staff, which I have a little bit of all here supporting me tonight, we want to thank you, Mayor and council members for this honor, city manager. Since 1939, we have been providing members with a safe place to save and borrow at a fair and reasonable rate. With a visionary Board of Directors, dedicated volunteers, which the mayor is one of them, that serve our credit and supervisory committees, an exceptional leadership team. Can't do it without them. We are committed to carrying forward the Family First vision, to be the leading credit union cooperative, helping members achieve their financial success. All of our volunteers, employees, live in this great valley, which means we shop here and we support our local charities. Our children attend school here. We are wholly invested in our community while creating real tangible value for the benefit of all. We are dedicated to the continued, continued success of Family First Credit Union. Our primary purpose is to deliver high value and quality service and financial expertise for all of our members' benefit. We want to create loan and deposit relationships, not just accounts. We provide convenient products and services at competitive prices and rates and service experience you'll recommend to your family and friends. We feel we offer stability, responsible financial management, accountability, value and a sense of family we all deserve. Furthermore, we will continue to focus on putting people first, along with supporting our community. It makes our credit union different. It makes us strong, one member at a time. As the fifth CEO since our inception, I am grateful that you have given us this honor and we appreciate the, to commemorate our milestone 80th year. I almost made it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, Madam Clerk, I think we have more business to attend to.
Yes. Our next order of business is public hearings.
And this is a public hearing for single lot special assessments. The purpose of this public hearing? Oh, yes. Why don't we, yeah, that's, yes, please, we'll take a moment. Thank you. Our, our, our immediate past mayor is now leaving. He hoped, he hoped to get out without being recognized. The purpose of this public hearing is for the property owners that receive a single lot special assessment notice to provide their objection and address and to address the council as a whole. Speakers must limit their remarks to this subject only. Begin by stating your name and property address. You will be limited to three minutes. Speakers shall not address individual council members, city staff or the audience, and this public hearing is not a question and answer session. Madam Clerk, do we have any to address us?
Yeah, you can call your comments forward to the podium.
All right.
They don't sign up.
Is there anyone to speak to the special, single lot special assessment? Please step forward, give us your name and address.
My name is Frank Randall. This is my wife, Bobby Randall. We live at 4035 Gallagher. For the past two years, we have received letters in regards to our false alarm fees. We came into city hall and asked about why we were receiving them. We don't even have an alarm at our home. And we were told to contact the company who sent us the letters. We contacted the company located somewhere in Texas. At that point, they sent us back to city hall. City hall sent us back to that company. We continued to get these letters. Now we get a letter saying that the $50 is going to be levied toward our taxes. And we don't understand why, why we have it. We never had a false alarm. We lived in this home for better than 25 years and we never had the police come to our home. So we understand, understand why, why we have this.
Thank you. We will, the manager's office will investigate and get back with you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Next, please give us your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Eddie Piggies. I'm here to address the false alarm also. At 926 Owens, I've gotten the same assessment letter as the previous person, and there is no alarm system at this address, 926 Owens. It's addressed to Andrea Piggies. I previously owned the property, I manage it, and there's no, this is an error, so I'd like to address that.
It will be, it will be addressed by staff as well.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your full name and address.
My name is Betty Scott. This is my husband Evander. I'm here about a false alarm as well. Property located at 1935 Walcott. The original owner, Mrs. McLean, has deceased. My husband is the personal representative for that property, so we don't know anything about the false alarm, but we do know that Mrs. McLean was very ill. She had dementia. She wound up in a nursing home and she passed away March 22nd, 2017.
Okay. Thank you. It will be investigated as well.
Okay.
I just wanted our city clerk to be able to, yeah, I'm sorry, she was...
We apologize.
Occupied by a prior speaker, and I wanted to make sure that she got your information down, so if you could start over, please.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, any documentation you're going to hand to me for this hearing, it must be something you can leave with me for the record. If not, please come in tomorrow, and we'll make copies of what you want to provide. Thank you, Mayor, for letting me clarify that, because, yeah.
Go ahead, again, why don't you just start over? We'll, we'll give you the full opportunity.
All right. My name is Linda Suggs. The residence is at 2230 Whittier Street here in Saginaw.
I'm sorry, what street?
2230 Whittier.
Whittier, thank you.
And this is in regard to payment for work done in the amount of $752.75. And I contacted the city probably about five years ago regarding the tree and the condition of the sidewalk. It was lifting up, the sidewalk was lifting up due to roots from the tree that was on the city side of the property. And I told them that the tree actually needed to be removed to alleviate the problem. I was told at that time that they would only remove the tree if the tree was damaged, which it wasn't damaged. So, I called again because the problem still continued, at least a couple years ago, with that sidewalk still lifting up. And I told them that it was not safe condition with that sidewalk the way it was. They did come out, they did like a temporary patch with like black asphalt or black tile or something, so that there wasn't a gap between one part of the sidewalk and the other. It was still lifted up, so that still really, it was like a quick fix for it. I called back to tell them that, to me, that still wasn't the answer to the problem, that the tree needed to be removed. That just didn't stop it there, and I was told again that they could not do anything about that because the tree was not damaged. But they did come back, they chopped down some of the branches, some of the limbs and stuff that were coming all the way down, about to cover the sidewalk and the yard. They did do that. So this year, in 2018 actually, they had someone to come out. They took about a week to try to chop through it before they could even lay any cement to take care of that sidewalk. And I felt like I should not be responsible for paying for that, because had I done anything with that tree before this even took place, it would have been illegal because it was not on my property, it was on the city. And I do have documentation, I've got a letter.
Is it a copy that you can leave with our clerk?
Yes.
Why don't you do that? Go ahead, if you're done?
Yes.
All right, real quickly, just step over and give it up. And if you'll step forward, we'll hold off until...
Thank you. Thank you.
Ready? Madam Clerk, go ahead, please, your name and address.
My name is Willie Shaw Jr., and my address is 521 South Webster. And this is about, the police came up in my house, and they, they broke all the windows and destroyed, kind of tore up the house. They killed a young man in there about, about 35 years old, so...
Is this addressing an assessment against you by the city?
Yes, they, they got me help for, I got to pay for boarding up the house that they, I had put brand new windows and stuff in there, and you know, I had to get it up, up date for us, you know, getting insurance before I did all this. They told, told what I, I got pictures, and I brought them down, took them down.
Is the, has the city billed you for something?
Yeah, they billed me for boarding it up.
She's got a notice.
Okay.
She's got the right notice.
Good, all right, go ahead.
They, they billed me for boarding, boarding the property, the property up. When they, I had put, I got pictures, I took them down to the, to, right downstairs here, and I went up to, to y'all, build, I mean, you know, up, right here. Went all, I did all the procedures. And they told me there ain't nothing they could do, but you know, I feel that it wasn't my fault. I don't even know the guy, young man. He just came up in there, you know, and they, you know...
We will, we will check it out. Do you have documents for the clerk today?
I just got what they sent me.
Okay, but you don't have anything to give her about this?
I already had turned them pictures and...
We have that then, thank you.
So...
Is there anything further you wish to say about this?
I mean, they, they told me they're going to put all this on my taxes and all of this, so I'm just trying to come up here and see, you know, I mean, I didn't, I didn't, I mean, they're just like, if I come and tear your place up, I'd be wanting, you'd be wanting something for me to pay.
We, we understand what you're saying. We can't answer it today. Someone will get back with you.
Well, they telling me they're going to put this on my taxes. They telling me they're going to charge me interest.
You are protesting that, we understand, and we'll, we'll look into it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, your name and address.
Hello, Shayla Jackson, 21 Brookwood Lane South. Contact, I'm here on behalf of false alarm fees. Now, question about this. False alarm fees, every time police came out to my house, my house been broken five times, and they came out, so never was a false alarm. The thing I'm here about is because they sent it over to Continental Management, which is my leasing agency, and now they're billing them for this $75 for a false alarm fee. So is there any way I can get this waived?
Well, we can't answer that today. We will address it, we'll investigate that, and get back with you.
Okay, how long does that take?
I don't have an answer for this.
Oh, well, what was the point of the meeting today?
That you could tell us that there's an issue that you wish us to look into.
Oh, okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Please state your full...
Good evening, Council. My name is Joseph Horanzy. I'm speaking on behalf of 2514 Thayer Street, or Thayer Street. And last winter, when you guys cut off people from dumping in Wick's Park, they decided to pick off, pick on my property on Williamson. Well, not my property, but the lot next door to me. I do not own the lot next door to me. They dumped five truckloads of garbage at night onto the property, household garbage came from the City of Saginaw. And I was told by here that I own the property. I do not own the property. I only own 88 feet of frontage across my property. All this garbage was dumped on there. I was forced by the city to clean this property, which I did do, because they were going to charge me $3,500 to clean it, because it was so much stuff. They dumped some stuff in my driveway, which we cleaned up. And also at the same time, they were doing the Williamson Road repave, and the people that were doing the construction there took the brush from the street that they knocked off the, you know, they knocked down branches off of trees and stuff, and dumped it onto the property, which is the city lot. I do not own it. It's for $129.28. The city, I put the stuff out to the road, I bagged it all up, put it out to the road. The city, I paid $200 a year to have the garbage picked up. They would not pick up anything. I ended up hauling all the way, three trailer loads, and, and I can't even count how many truckloads we hauled off the properties, my property and the city lot, because the City of Saginaw says, I own the lot, but I do not own that lot. And there was five bags left that I had out to the road, five garbage bags, contractor bags, and the trash company did not pick it up. So I got a notice on Friday telling me, and I called up here, and telling me that I had to get those five bags off the re, off the road, even though pickup was on Monday. So I moved them up and put them on the city lot, behind a tree. And the City of Saginaw came Tuesday morning, picked those five bags up, and then they're charging me the $130. But my thing is, is I cleaned up all this stuff, hauled all this stuff away, I cut the grass there, and it's not my lot. I do not own it. I asked them up here, up here on this floor, to give me title to the property. And they said I had to go to the land bank. I said, I don't own the property. So, I came up here several times, trying to clear this up. So I ended up almost at gunpoint cleaning that property that was not mine. I do not own it. You know, my, my next option is probably a lawyer, because I had to haul all this stuff out of there that did not belong to me.
Your time is up. We will, we will get back.
All right, thank you.
Please state your full name and address.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sharon Bennett. I am the Regional Manager for Continental Management. We are the Managing Agent for Brookwood Park and Reuben Daniels Townhomes. My address is 525 D Land Road, Flushing, Michigan. But I'm here in regards to two statements that we received. The first one, you've already heard from Ms. Shayla Jackson. She resides at 21 Brookwood Lane. The invoice, or the, the tax statement that we got was for 3701 Hess Avenue. Your, your statements went out on February, Friday, February 1st, and it came across my desk of the following week. We, there is no 3701 Hess Avenue. Turns out that's a blanket address for the whole apartment community there, all 60 units. Myself and others in our team made many attempts to contact Kathy Starling, who was noted on the, the notice about this problem. And it wasn't until this morning that I finally got a call back from Ms. Starling to break that, those bills down for me. The one for 3701 Hess Avenue, she was able to tell me was for a permit, not a false alarm, but a lack of permit for the alarm at that address. As the landlord, I had no way of knowing that an alarm had been placed in that apartment. I had no way of enforcing any compliance with the policies that they had to be permitted. So therefore, I am contesting that this happened in September of 201917, or 2017. We're now in 2019, almost two years later, and this is the first time that it has been brought to the owner's attention that there was a problem in that unit. The other bill we received was for 1608 Sanford. The, we contacted the resident at that address. She was not familiar with any of these notices from that time. Again, when I spoke with Ms. Starling this morning, she indicated that that is not for the address at 1608. It is actually for three separate addresses. I do have one of our residents here today, Ms. Peggy Smith, who has received a $75 bill for having a unpermitted alarm, unpermitted alarm. However, this, this alarm has been in this building for over a decade. Mrs. Smith has resided in her apartment for eight years. Neither she nor we have any record of the alarm ever being changed out in that residence, and therefore we are questioning why we would be billed for a new permit on an existing alarm that nothing has changed on. One of the, the other resident, who owes a very significant amount of money, has been...
That is the end of your time?
Could I have two sessions then, because I had two notices?
We can only give one session. If there's a person who received it, as you indicated, this lady here, she could speak.
Okay.
Yes, well, my name is Peggy Smith, and I reside at 1716 Falwell. And as she was saying, the landlord, I wasn't at home at the time, and so when I got home, she told me that this meeting was at 6:30, so I came up here to, if I can dispute this bill, because I had been getting the bill, and I had been residing there for eight years, and I never used the alarm, and I haven't had an alarm put in at this complex. And when I do get a notice from the City of Saginaw, I let them know that, and I had called the office, and they told me to ignore it. So when I got this letter from the landlord today, and I spoke with her, and she was telling me about it, and I said, well, I need to come because I'm on a fixed income. And you know, when I first moved in the complex, I asked them, did I have to pay for the alarm? And they told me, no. So I'm steady getting billed for this every month. You know, so...
Alls I can tell you is, this is your opportunity to give us your objection, and if there's something that has changed, they'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Hi, my name's Gary Buckard. I live at 902 South Oakley. I'm here for my mother. She bought a lot at 1104 Brockway from the land bank, and before we bought it, we were assured there was no liens or special assessments against it. It was a demo, it was done in 17, and we got a bill for $1,340 for sidewalk repair. Now, it's my understanding, any demos done with Michigan State Housing Authority, all known hazards have to be removed with a demo, from what Tom Miller explained. And they took, the demo contractor took what was marked out by a tree root, what actually was, part of the sidewalk was 1102's property, what shouldn't, you know, they should be paying for their own, not the demo. But we talked to engineering in early December, and they give us a bunch of paperwork to take over to the land bank, because they say the land bank's responsible for it. And Tom Miller got back with us in December and said it was supposed to have been straightened out, and we shouldn't be getting billed for it. Well, we've got the bill here, and...
You, you, is that, we've got your objection, and that's, that's the purpose that you can make your objection?
It was, we wouldn't have bought the lot if we didn't own, there was a $1,300 special assessment against it, because we were assured it was free and clear. It was basically misrepresented. You know, we were working with Terry Collier on buying it, and...
At this point, we don't have an answer for you. This is your opportunity to give us your objection, which we've now, which we've noted, and if there is a change, we'll let you know.
And Tom Miller's got all the information.
Okay, that's good. If you have any paperwork for our clerk, you can give it to her now, if you have any...
No, everything, we took everything to Tom Miller. He called us in December and said, whether he worked with, I don't know if it's John Stumpel's department with the demo, or with Beth over in engineering.
All right.
Said it was straightened out, but we're still getting billed by engineering.
All right, thank you. Come forward, and please give us your name and address.
Alicia Jekyll, 2129 North Clinton. I had a bag of yard waste that I cleaned up off the, like, the curb on the road, and they wanted to charge me for it. And I thought we had a street sweeper, so I, like, didn't know I had to clean that up, so I did, but then they wanted to charge me for it. And then I have a neighbor that keeps, like, calling the city and doing violations, and I mean, I don't, I think it's kind of a harassment thing when he's taking videos of my kids, and it's, it's wasting time of the whole situation. That's how all these violations, and then, oh, now this trash can was here, that, yeah. So it's just a, all the way around, I don't know where to go with the whole situation. But I don't want to pay the, I already cleaned it, and I had to pay the neighbor kids to clean it up, so I've already paid once to have the debris removed, so I don't think I should have to pay it again.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Are there any more objections to special lot assessments? Are there any more objections? The third and final... This is your opportunity to give us your objection, which we've now, which we've noted, and if there is a change, we'll let you know.
And Tom Miller's got all the information.
That's good. If you have any paperwork for our clerk, you can give it to her now, if you have any...
No, I, everything, we took everything to Tom Miller. He called us in December and said, whether he worked with, I don't know if it's John Stumpel's department with the demo or with Beth over in engineering.
All right.
Said it was straightened out, but we're still getting billed by engineering.
Thank you. Come forward, and please give us your name and address.
Alicia Jekyll, 2129 North Clinton. Um, I had a bag of yard waste that I cleaned up off the, like, the curb on the road, and they wanted to charge me for it. And I thought we had a street sweeper, so I, like, didn't know I had to clean that up, so I did. But then they wanted to charge me for it. And then I have a neighbor that keeps, um, set, like, calling the city and doing violations. And, I mean, I don't, I think it's kind of a harassment thing when he's taking videos of my kids, and it's, it's wasting time of the whole situation. That's how all these violations, and then, oh, now this trash can was here that, yeah. So it's just a, all the way around, I don't know where to go with the whole situation. But I don't want to pay the, I already cleaned it, and I had to pay the neighbor kids to clean it up. So I've already paid once to have the debris removed, so I don't think I should have to pay it again.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any more objections to special lot assessments? Are there any more objections? Third and final time, are there any more objections? Hearing none? Um, I would, uh, need a motion to close the hearing?
So, support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried. Madam Clerk?
Our next order of business is public input.
All right. Welcome to all those who have signed up to address counsel tonight in public input. Thank you for sharing with us your thoughts and input. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. Bring call to the podium. Please introduce yourself and state your home address. Let us know if you'll be speaking solely for yourself or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points first. We ask that your per- your presentation be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to the council, so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups, we refer to city staff. Thank you.
We have one this evening, Mayor, and that is Sharon Bennett.
I'd like to withdraw my request.
Okay. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, that takes us to remarks of counsel.
All right, and we start, I think, with counsel involved, is that right? Mil- Mr. Councilman Mil, that's right. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, I just want to mention one thing.
What?
Sorry, wait. Oh.
Well, no, no, that's, that's good. I was just gonna say, no. All right, all right, well, maybe get in there.
John, you know how to clear a room out now.
All right, Councilman Mil.
Thank you again. Uh, just one specific thing to mention tonight, and, uh, one remark for the manager's office. Uh, I noticed this weekend, they had the outhouse races over at Hoyt Park. Another sterling example of our riverfront being used for enjoyment. And I wanted to congratulate Team Reamer, who took first place. Um...
Kind of makes sense.
Looking at the list of people who came with special assessment questions, it was interesting, there was a predominance of complaints about false alarm charges. And it sounded like, do we use an outside company for some of the letters sent out on this? If so, um, I'm just curious, uh, how the information flows from us to them, to the letters being sent out. So I, I'd like a little more information on that at some point.
You want me to respond to that now, or just?
If it, if it's an answer we have...
Yeah, it's a simple answer. Um, as far as the single lot special assessments, we prepare each letter that goes out to the property owner.
Here?
Yes, right here. Yes, we do it in-house.
Because it seemed like someone referred to a company in there, but it may have been their landlord, like the situation with Continental.
Well, I think the complaints are objections to the false alarm ones. The false alarms are controlled by a, built through a contractor.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Just in particular, false alarm?
That one is, yes.
Okay. So... Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Scherzer? Councilwoman Scherzer, my apologies.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, to my sister in greekdom, Leola Wilson, you are a trailblazer. And your legacy will never be forgotten for what you've contributed to the community. So thank you. Um, Family First Credit Union, thank you for everything that you have contributed for the past 80 years as well. I don't, I think everyone left, but, um, I don't want to go, uh, without saying that. Uh, as president of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Zeta Omega Zeta Chapter, I know it's a mouthful, but, um, I am proud to announce that we are having our finer womanhood program this year. And two council members are going to be honored this year. Our Shining Star Service Award is going to be given to Brenda Moore. And then our up-and-coming trailblazer, one of five, is going to be given to Councilman Bryant. So I want to personally say thank you for everything you both contribute to the community. And then hopefully some of you attend, so let me know if you need tickets. Um, I also want to send my love and heartfelt condolences to the families of retired Larry Coleman, um, Kim Davis, and then also past Mayor Greg Branch. It was a great, um, send-off, very touching. And, uh, he also has a legacy that won't be forgotten here in the city of Saginaw. So that is all I have, Mayor, and I just want to say thank you for all of the council members that attended the funeral as well. Good to see everyone there.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Mayor Protem, Brenda Moore.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank all of our speakers. Congratulations to Mother. Congratulations to Family First. I told the mayor, "God, I didn't know I could join it now. I live in the city. I don't work for the city, but I can join it, so that's a good thing." Uh, for all of our people who came up for the special assessment, I'm sure that we are going to resolve some of this, maybe not all of it, but I'm sure everybody will get some answers or some response quickly on how we can help and if we can help. On Saturday, Saturday morning, I didn't attend the funeral, but I did go to the wait, uh, the late, the late, um, Mr. Branch. But we had, uh, I just send it rich, man, this was our year, our 10th annual year for Walk for Warmth for CAC, and that was a dynamite affair. For all those who came, I thank you so much, and I thank those who, who donated. And it's still not too late. You can send your money, you can send your checks to Saginaw Community Action Center, and label them or put in the memorandum Walk for Warmth. On next Friday, no, this Friday, First Ward will have Taste of Soul at First Ward Community Center. For those who like good cooking, you need to go. Tickets are $20, and they're, they'll be selling them at the door as well. You can contact First Ward Community Center on Friday. Saturday, my fellow colleagues will be attending a weekender from MML. Um, and we will be in Frankenmuth. We'll be in Frankenmuth, I'll be a facilitator. This is the first time in my six years being on council that November the 19th and 20th, all of the council people will be journeying with me to the conference. We have all nine of our representatives going to learn about how we do, what we do, and how we can do it better. On Saturday, I attended the chairman's ball along with the mayor. It was a fabulous activity. You just had to be there. The sound was Motown, and believe me, we danced all night. For those that know me, you know I dance anyways, so it didn't take much for me to be dancing. Um, it was just a real, real good time. For all of the things that are going on in Saginaw, I too must say, we have a lot going on. We have more going on in this city than people really know. There are a lot of things that are not being done, and I really wish people would come to the meetings so that they can understand and they can tell us. Tell us when you got an activity. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lutz?
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, I'd like to start by saying, uh, congratulations on 50 years of service to the NAACP and the surrounding area and the city here. Um, Mrs. Wilson, you are, um, one of my heroes and someone I certainly aspire to, um, be like and leave a legacy like that behind. So, um, thank you for all you do and have done, and I know will continue to do, I'm sure, quietly. But, um, the other thing I have tonight is, um, I had the opportunity to go on a ride along, uh, Friday night from about 7 o'clock till midnight. And, uh, the officer I was with, Officer CC, he was, uh, um, just a fantastic person to ride around with and kind of pick his brain. And, um, it was a cold night, and he described it as a, um, a slower night, I guess. But, um, slow nights for a police officer are exciting and wild nights for us average people, because it was still very, uh, very active, very busy. And I just appreciate the opportunity to tag along with the people who work for our city, especially our police officers. Um, and just thank you very much for the opportunity. That's all I have.
Councilmember Clark?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Wilson, Mother Wilson, if anybody was at your event at Horizons, they know. They know. And I love your challenge to us and everybody that was in attendance, is to serve, is to get involved, is to give back. Not only in addition to being a member of the NAACP, but there's a lot of things that we can do. So that's how I intend to honor you, is to continue what I'm doing. Uh, and I just wanted to take a moment to, um, acknowledge the passing of former Mayor Greg Branch. I didn't get to work with him, uh, but I think that's the same thing we could say about Greg Branch. The best way to honor someone like that with an impeccable legacy is to continue to serve. I think that's what they would want to do. Um, we have, uh, attended a number of events, uh, seeing as it's Black History Month, as well as things are going on in the community, uh, with, uh, Walk for Warmth. I did have a chance to attend the outhouse races with the mayor. It was a wonderful, uh, wonderful afternoon. Uh, but I did want to just put in a plug for the Saginaw Conservation District. They'll be having their annual meeting at SVRC Marketplace, uh, at 2:00 PM this coming Saturday. Also, I want to say thank you to, uh, Ms. Vicky and also Ms. Rachel for their work in putting a proclamation together for the Great Lakes Bay Hispanic Leadership Institute. It was their 10th year. Uh, Monica B. Reyes, she works, previously worked for Saginaw Valley State University before retiring. She's stepping back. Uh, Fenice Sosa, uh, is, uh, assuming a lot of those responsibilities. But it was an absolutely beautiful, uh, event. I know that, uh, we had some emails going around about it, uh, but it was packed. It was absolutely packed. They did a great job, uh, in spite of the weather. But I just wanted to say thank you to, um, Ms. Vicky Davis and Rachel Heseska for putting a beautiful proclamation together. Uh, it was a wonderful evening. We look forward to partnering with, uh, the Great Lakes Bay Hispanic Leadership Institute, uh, in the future. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Forbes?
Thank you. Good evening. Um, I'd like to repeat the words that others have said, uh, tonight about the legacy of Mayor Greg Branch in our favorite city. Um, his service to our community has really shaped us in so many ways. He led us through a complex time of our history and brought incredible intellect and understanding to so many issues. And I knew, um, but I also know that I, I called on him for those, uh, offered that help as well. He's always eager to pass his knowledge on. His influence will continue to impact our community through his friends and many collaborators. Um, his wife, Ann, and his family that so generously shared him with all of us will be in my thoughts and prayers, certainly. And then I'd also like to, of course, thank, uh, Ms. Leola on her incredible service to our community. I can't imagine where we would be without her. Um, and I thank you for your investment and your pure heart, always. And also I'd like to congratulate Family First on 80 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ostas?
Okay, um, just real quick, uh, congratulations on everybody and their proclamations tonight, uh, without, I reiterate what my fellow, uh, council members have said. And also, uh, over the last two weeks and more, I've been, I was, had the opportunity, I attended a couple Neighborhood Association meetings, so I went to Houghton Jones. It's always a, and a good chance to see them. And also I attended the Old Town Saginaw Association Meeting. Um, and that was really good, too, because the DDA was there and kind of answered some questions that they've been asking. Is, that's kind of like where everything's been going with their tax recapture money. So that was nice that Cassie Miller was there, and she gave a great presentation for them and some of the things that have happened over the year, and then things that are coming up for next year. Um, also attended the, uh, State of the City address, where Mayor Clock did a great job presenting this year. And, uh, just some of the highlights from that, um, presentation, if, uh, people didn't get a chance to see it, the city's had just a great boom in development in our downtown areas and old town areas, and I think a 400% increase, and that is quite astounding for last year, in 2018. And that was all part of the presentation. Also to, um, just a few, uh, comments, if I don't run out some time here, too. Greg Branch was a very, very dear friend of mine, and, um, my heart is still heavy for him and his passing and for his wife, his children. But Greg, uh, Greg left behind a legacy. And he loved Saginaw. He believed that we could make it a great place to live. He had a passion for that. He loved this city, and he showed it. He loved those around him, and you felt it. So, again, I just want to say, uh, I'm going to miss him dearly, and, uh, my heart goes out to the family. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Balls, thank you. Uh, first of all, I would like to, uh, thank Mrs., uh, Leola Wilson for sharing all the years that she had on the NAACP board and for the other things she's done in the city of Saginaw, too. Uh, like to thank her for birthing one of my classmates. Uh, when I first met you, Ms. Wilson, I didn't think that was your son. I'm just like, we the same age, it just didn't seem right, because I thought you were a lot younger for having that guy. But thank God for it. Uh, I would like to say, too, that, uh, a lot of people may not know this, but Ms. Wilson is, has accomplished some of the first things that will happen to African-American female in the city of Saginaw. And that's serving on the, uh, Saginaw Media School Board, and she serves on the Saginaw State, uh, University Board of Trustees, uh, as a first. So, uh, her name goes down in history. The second. Okay. Well, I, was you the first? Okay, then, she was the first. So I'm just saying, so her name's going to go down in history with a lot of other guys, pioneers in the city of Saginaw. We thank you for your service. Because I, I too believe that, uh, that's how I pay my rent here to live on this earth today, to serve my fellow man and woman, is to serve them, is the way I pay my rent to be here on God's earth. And, uh, thinking about that, I had the opportunity to, uh, uh, attend a, uh, spirit hockey game with my little brother in the Big Brothers and Sisters program the other day. And, uh, that was, uh, a real event for me. Saw one of the city workers here, Vicky was there, and I didn't recognize it, and I felt so bad about that. But, uh, uh, that hockey game was really something. I don't normally attend hockey games, and it was really action-packed and fast game. And my little brother really enjoyed it, too. So, uh, the Big Brothers and Sisters, uh, and somebody else rented us a, um, a Hummer limousine, took us from the Big Brothers' office to the game, and it fed the kids pizza and pop and stuff. It was really a nice event, so I appreciate them for doing that. And I would like to say, too, that I did go to a dinner at the, um, for the One Week, One Street, which was really nice. Uh, unfortunately, it's going to be their last dinner, because it costs a lot of money. They want to leave the, uh, the money that they do make, they want to leave it to fix up homes in the city that side of town. If we could have every quadrant in this city do what One Week, One Street do, this place could be awesome in no time, because they do a good job over there. And, and all the organizations over there donate money and time. I've been on the Board Directors, One Gas Credit Union, we donate time and money to help fix that up, too. So, uh, maybe we can get that going here, other people can mention that, maybe we can get some One Week, One Streets all over the city. So, that, that's all my comments. Thank you very much. Thank you. Ms. Wilson, thank you for being here today to give us a chance to acknowledge for the city, for the NAACP, and for the folks in our community. Your strength and compassion and how you led the NAACP was wonderful and really gave us all a chance to move forward. So thank you very much. Greg Branch, uh, I can't really say much more, certainly can't say any better than my fellow council members have already said it. So it is a loss to all of us. One person that I do want to mention that has passed away as well is Jim Whacker. He was a longtime city assessor and, uh, just passed away this past week. Wonderful gentleman. Um, I think he was, uh, with the city for well over 30 years, maybe even close to 40. But it was a long time. I know he was here in the 70s, all the way up in the 80s and 90s. So he was, uh, quite a, a, a strong person in that office as well. And, uh, the council members who mentioned my, me, uh, us at the outhouse races, I even got to judge, which was interesting, judging the best outhouse. I'm not sure that's something to be proud of, but I got to judge the best out, outhouse. And I got to judge the most, uh, unique hats. So it was a lot of fun. The, uh, the outhouse races, along with the other activities out there are great. Larry Ruffhauer and his, and the Friends of Hoyt Park are doing a wonderful job, having the ice available. It is wonderful out there. If you haven't been out, take a, you know, if you're a skater, go on out. The, uh, kids were enjoying the sledding on the hill. Well, tons of kids out there on, uh, on Saturday, so it's really good to see the Hoyt Park back, what it used to be. It's wonderful. Um, I want to mention, this past, a week ago, uh, a week ago on Saturday, was the Saginaw Bay Symphony Orchestra's Valentine's, uh, concert, uh, which, uh, I'm sort of partial to symphony. And, uh, it would certainly invite more of you to come to the next one at the end of, end of March, on Saturday, I think it's the 31st. Um, and also on April 11th is the Symphony's, uh, These Men Can Cook fundraiser. If you ever had a chance or wanted a chance to try, uh, or to sample, you know, dozens and dozens of, uh, items of food, uh, it, it's a great opportunity, so put it on your calendar. And I would challenge all my fellow councilmen to join me as a chef. I have no idea what I'm going to cook yet, might be potato chips, but... Well, yeah, you know, you never know what you can do. But it, it's, it's a lot of fun. If you've got any questions, I'd love to have everyone, love to have all five of us there. So I throw that out as a challenge. And also throw it out as a challenge to our police and to our fire departments. Last year, we had two firemen who, uh... Last year, we had two firemen who cooked and did a wonderful job. Had a great display showing our fire, highlighting our fire department. We can do the same thing with police and have you all there. Hopefully, we'll have a lot of people. Thank you. With that, Madam Clerk.
That takes us now to the reports from Manager.
All right, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. We do have a few presentations this evening, so I'm going to start with those. So first, I would ask Officer Stacer and Jody Wilk to come up. They have a brief presentation for you about our new canine.
Good evening. I am Jody Wilk, the Executive Director of the Saginaw Valley Police Canine Association. And tonight, we would like to present the city of Saginaw with a new canine who will be replacing our senior canine, Canjo, who served seven and a half years for the city and will be hopefully staying with Officer Stacer if that's approved later on in the evening. But I will let Officer Stacer tell you a little bit about his new partner.
I think I've met most of you guys and gals. Doug Stacer, I've been here about 21 and a half years. My partner worked here seven and a half years. He was now eight and a half and he was slowing down a lot. So we had decided last fall that it was about time to start looking for his replacement. Well, we found that in Envy. He's born in the States. As you know, most of our dogs or all of our dogs were all imported in. This time, we chose to stay kind of in-house, sort of. He come from Ohio. He's just turned three, actually, Belgian Malinois. He does everything the same as all of our other dogs. We trained him for about three to four months when we got him. He's been on the road now about two and a half weeks. First two nights out, he got three people. Two people broke into a house. We caught him in there. And one person on a track that had pointed a gun at his significant other. So he's been successful so far for the city and we hope that he's going to continue to do what he does, just like the other three dogs in the city.
Welcome to your new partner.
Thanks.
Any other comments?
I do want to add that he was made possible through two grants. The Nicholas Foundation and the Wixson Link Foundation each paid for half of Envy. Because Envy's size is smaller than Canjo, we couldn't use a lot of Canjo's equipment. So we had additional purchases. And that funding came from the Police Officers Association of Michigan through a canine grant that they had received from AT&amp;T. So we had secured that money over the summer, not knowing which dog we were going to be getting. But thankfully, we were able to do that because we had to buy a maligator-proof kennel. If anybody knows the Belgian Malinois breed, knows it is a very strong, very high energy. So complete opposite of Canjo.
Not that you can tell.
Well, thank you, Ms. Wilk. Thank you, Officer Stacer. We appreciate you being here and introducing him to us. And again, welcome, we welcome him to the force with you.
Thanks. I do have a quick, if it's possible, a canine oath that I'd like to read. Pretend it's Envy reading it, I guess you could say. "I promise to be worth every cent it took to train me. I promise to track down criminals who threaten and harm our community. I promise to stand with you against the violence that penetrates our society. I promise to sniff out the drugs being advertised to your children. I promise to stay resolved and focused upon the success of our mission. No matter what happens, I will be by your side, your loyal companion until the very end. I will never leave your side. I will never waver. I will never give up."
Thank you.
Would the councilmembers like to meet him?
Yes, yes.
He's an all-business type of dog, so I'll bring him by, but...
What's his name again?
Envy, E-N-V-Y. It was E-N-V-Y, but we tweaked it a little bit to make it a little bit unique.
You have to make it difficult.
He knows everybody wants to be like him, so we hit it.
I wrote out with, I don't want to mispronounce his name. Is it Canjo? Canjo on Christmas with Officer Adams. And I tell you, he has slowed down a little bit, so I'm not sure.
Officer Adams is here with his partner Diva.
Diva. That's who it was. Diva. Okay, okay.
Yeah, Diva's in the back right now. He's one of the other dogs. He works...
Oh, that's a lot of dogs.
Diva here, too.
Yeah, he's here in the back.
He's a little sad that he's not the rookie anymore.
Well, you can, what, introduce... However you think we should be introduced. That works. That works.
Now he presses. I know if I act like y'all scared, he gonna be scared.
Anna, Anna, no more limitations.
Same, might got eat fair for me, ain't he?
Thank you, Officer Stacer. We're glad he didn't alert.
We're going to have, we're going to have Envy, we're going to have Envy stamp his oath.
All right.
Andy is, the dog is being fingerprinted.
He's got to give his little signature.
Nice shot.
And now you messing up our floor.
This is Scott LaRoe. He is actually the trainer who got Envy ready for Saginaw. He's with Magnum Canine. And actually does all of the training for all four Saginaw canines, so.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Well, thank you, Officer Stacer and Jody Wilk. And remind council and the public that without the work of the Saginaw Police Canine Association, we wouldn't be able to have these dogs. I think before they got involved, maybe we had one canine. We have four now and that allows Chief to schedule them on varying shifts and provide coverage to the city pretty much anytime. And they're all canine officers, along with their canine partners, are available for call-out pretty much anytime. So that group is dedicated and we thank both of them for all the work that they put in it and the association for all of their... Their dogs are expensive and the equipment is as well. So thanks to Jody and her, her crew for the work that they do. And with that, we did have a council member request a presentation just to learn a little bit more about the Saginaw Housing Commission. So I invited Executive Director Leslie Fox to come to council, introduce herself, talk a little bit about the Housing Commission. I'll say, I remember when Stacy was, or when Leslie was hired by the association and she's made a big difference there. So I'm glad to have her give an update.
Well, so Ms. Fox?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity for speaking with you today. I'm Leslie Fox, the Executive Director at the Saginaw Housing Commission and have served in this role for seven years. So I'm here today to give you a brief overview of our agency and to give some more information to our newest council members. Who are we? The Saginaw Housing Commission is a public housing authority that was established in July of 1947 by the city council. And we have been serving the community for 72 years. We are regulated and funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We are governed by a board of five commissioners. Larry Campbell, President, Peter Tyson, Vice President, and Dr. Dawn Hinton, Commissioner. We are looking to fill the vacancy of two commissioners, one of which being a person participating in our programs known as the Resident Commissioner. Our mission is to provide access to affordable housing and resources to create self-reliance for individuals and families. To achieve this, our agency provides housing and rental assistance to low-income families through two programs. Public Housing and the Housing Choice Voucher Program, otherwise known as Section 8. The Public Housing Program. The Saginaw Housing Commission owns and manages 631 housing units in the city of Saginaw. We have five high-rise developments dedicated for seniors, 62 and older, and our persons with disabilities. We also have approximately 200 single-family homes. The Housing Choice Voucher Program. Section 8 allows families and individuals to use a voucher or rental assistance anywhere a landlord is willing to accept it. The Saginaw Housing Commission has allocated approximately 1,200 vouchers with special-purpose vouchers for the Family Unification Program and the Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing Program. Also in executing our mission, the Saginaw Housing Commission maintains a Family Self-Sufficiency Program. This program enables HUD-assisted families to increase their earned income and reduce their dependency on welfare assistance and rental subsidies. So you might ask, how are we doing? Our two major programs are evaluated annually by HUD and designated as either troubled, standard, or high performer. The Public Housing Program is evaluated through the Public Housing Assessment Score. Saginaw Housing Commission has been designated as a standard performer for the past three years. The Housing Choice Voucher Program is evaluated through the Section 8 Management Assessment Program. The Saginaw Housing Commission has been a high performer for the past four years. So how are we able to do what we do? The Public Housing Program is funded through operating subsidy, tenant rental payments, and capital fund grants. The operating subsidy is approximately $2 million. Tenant rental income is approximately $1.3 million. And the capital fund program is approximately $500,000 on average. We were awarded approximately $200,000 for a competitive safety and security grant last year. Only two public housing authorities in Michigan received this award, the Saginaw Housing Commission and the Flint Housing Commission. Kudos to Saginaw. The Housing Choice Voucher Program is funded in two categories. The administration and our housing assistance payments that go to our landlords on the behalf of our tenants. The administration is approximately $0.5 million and our housing assistance payments is approximately $5.5 million. The Family Self-Sufficiency Program is funded through an annual grant process, which is approximately $100,000. So your burning question that you have today is how can you, the city council, be of assistance? The Public Housing Program is not adequately funded through operating subsidy or capital fund program. And this can be seen through the backlog of capital improvements needed nationwide. The Saginaw Housing Commission is going to participate in a voluntary program called the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. This will help preserve public housing by providing public housing agencies with access to more stable funding to make needed improvements to properties. The Rental Assistance Demonstration provides public housing authorities a way to rehabilitate or repair units without depending on additional money from Congress. Some funding sources, our main funding source includes low-income housing tax credits. However, that may not be enough funding that we need. Therefore, we will need GAAP funding, which will be additional funding that could come from the city of Saginaw. And that is home or community development block grants. Therefore, as we make a transition to provide stable funding in serving low-income residents of the city, we look forward to working with you. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. If anyone has any questions.
I do.
Just probably for information, because I don't know, who regulates how many Section 8 vouchers you give out?
HUD. We were allocated the two, the 1,200. But we've been at that number for several years. The only way that it was increased was the VASH vouchers that we received. And we have 60 of those.
Okay. That's what I thought, but thank you.
Mayor Broton?
How are you, Ms. Leslie?
Good. How are you?
You know, we talk all the time. What do you want from us? What do you, how can we help you?
So as many public housing authorities are trying to go into the rental assistance program, we're really going to need assistance when we choose areas that we might want to develop on and change the vacate of public housing. Because right now, we're funded only through public housing and that is prorated every year because they're not, the appropriations come in less and less. So we have to make do with what we have. So we're trying to go into another avenue that will make sure we have stable funding. So we will go through private development and we will work with a developer to make sure that we build up the development as it is, to make sure it's 100%, so that there are no repairs that need to be done and that there's funding allocated within the project so that it can be sustained.
So where are you talking about this building?
So once we start the process, we will have an assessment done of our inventory. So that inventory will tell us whether a development will able to be sustained and renovated or whether the inventory has sustained too many, that need too many improvements and it's more cost-effective to either sell or demolish the unit and then build again. So we either can, and then to get low-income housing tax credits, you have to be in certain proximities to things in order to get good scoring, in order to get the tax credits that you need.
So the group that you're working with, they have all of that? All of that's available to the, to the community to know, like buying housing? You've got training going on with that, right? Or you're getting ready to start it?
So I've been going to training for RED for the past two years because this has been a great program. They just raised the cap on the amount of units that can be listed in there. So a lot of housing authorities are going through that. The Flint Housing Commission has already done so. Bay City Housing Commission has already done so. So a lot of agencies and Grand Rapids Housing Commission, they started this program well into the 80s, even before it was known as the Rental Assistance Program.
So, once again, you have a target area that you're working in?
As of yet...
All over the city? What is it?
So, so right now, we don't have specifications because we haven't finished our assessment of our current inventory. So this process takes several years. We put in our applications for two of our, for two of our developments, but it goes, so then we'll have another one. So we're planning on doing every one of our developments, but concurrently after we do the first two. So we haven't even started the process of our inventory, but I just want to keep this on your radar as the things come ahead.
One more thing.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilwoman Forbes?
So did I hear you write that you have an opening on your board?
Yes, we have two openings.
So one has to be a resident and one can be a member of the general? So city resident, county resident?
No, it's open. It doesn't have to be a city resident. Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So the process for that would be that they would fill out the form on the website and turn it into our clerk's office, correct?
That is correct.
Wonderful. So I encourage folks to be considerate. If this is something that they really care about, that, that's a wonderful opportunity to give back to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Oh, yes, Councilmember Balls.
The developments, do they have, do they need to be by walking area to grocery stores and things of that nature?
That is correct.
That's a problem that we have in Saginaw. We don't really have any good grocery stores in the city of Saginaw.
That is correct. So that will be one of our challenges when we're moving forward.
So is there any funds to help build grocery stores, community grocery stores and stuff like that? Have you ever seen anything like that?
No, not through us. We're, we only get housing funding, but I haven't seen anything. But if I do, I will make sure that, you know, we work together with the city to make sure we can make that possible.
Thank you. Councilman Mill?
Yes, good evening. I have two questions. You mentioned you manage directly 631 housing units between your high-rises and single-family. And then there's 1,200 Section 8 vouchers. Approximately, how many residents are there per unit? What's your total community served of?
So we serve approximately 5,000 per year.
Okay. And the second question... And the second question, the city, you service the city of Saginaw.
So our public housing units are located in the city. However, Section 8 vouchers can be used in the county, the entire county. And if a person chooses to use mobility and go outside of our jurisdiction, they're allowed to do that as well.
So are there other housing agencies within Saginaw County also participating in any of these, or are you the head agency for the whole county?
We are the head agency for the whole county. But MISTA also provides vouchers within our jurisdiction.
Above and beyond this 1,200?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Fox? Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Fox.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. And just a few other reminders or comments. The mayor, I think, did do an excellent job with the state of the city first one, so congratulations on that. And also thank you to Vicki Davis, who assisted the mayor in preparing that and coordinating all the information from the department heads. Also a reminder, tomorrow is Neighborhood Action, Association Action Group meeting, February 19th, Tuesday, in the council chambers at noon. And finally, I did want to mention that the Riverfront Development Commission, our meeting tomorrow is going to be at, or start at Indigo. And I think if you're interested in what's going on there, they have some really exciting projects going on, and we'd be, hopefully, weather permitting, we'll do a little tour of the riverfront to talk about where we're going with those projects. I really would commend, the chair did a lot of work on getting cost estimates and ideas for a couple of projects right on the riverfront. Interested in that? It's at 5 o'clock tomorrow, and we'll be meeting at Club Indigo. And I know they will be looking at possible funding opportunities for those projects. The city, we allocate $5,000 a year, that's all, to the Riverfront Commission. So oftentimes, we do hear, why don't they do anything? We do the cleanup, and Councilman Bryant is heading that up and has been for the past couple of years. That's pretty much all fundraising, to get that done, and also asking favors. But years ago, I think they had quite a significant budget allocated by the city. But if you're ever wondering what they, why they don't do as much as they're used to, the money is an issue. But I think there's a lot of energy there to be able to do fundraise these projects done. And I think there's some more projects that groups are going to be fundraising for that are going on in the city, and I know Phil's been working with them, so in upcoming meetings, we may give them an opportunity to present to council as well, so that we can see what they're planning and where maybe we could help support them, if without funds, perhaps with letters of support and assistance. And with that, that concludes the management update.
Madam Clerk, excuse me.
That takes us to the consent agenda.
Before we do, I want to, excuse me, I seem to have something in my throat. I do want to mention, in addition to Vicki, Matt also was very helpful. I do want to give a shout-out for him, even if I can't shout out. I'm not sure what's going on, but anyway. Madam Clerk, we are on the consent agenda. Yeah, don't say that. The agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and on SGTV channel 91. We need, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving items for support. Are there any exceptions?
Exception, number seven.
Number seven. Any other exceptions? Any other exceptions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried. Madam Clerk?
One exception is item number seven. Approve the purchase with Environmental Systems Research Institute for $39,000 for an enterprise GIS software solution. That was Councilmember Scherz.
So I just have a question. Does the city of Saginaw currently uses the GIS system?
So I'm wondering, is this a new system in addition to what we're using, a renewal? I just want some more clarification on...
It's actually the software that they are using to put the GIS data out there on sonar. So the city used to be the GIS coordinator for the entire county. We evaluated that probably three, three years ago or so, and it was, it was costing us money. We weren't bringing in enough money, so we did, we did stop being the coordinator for the county, but this is a software that will allow us to put our data out there.
So is it a contract renewal, kind of?
It's the, it's the software cost, yeah. It's a license.
It's a licensing agreement.
Is this an annual fee?
Uh, I believe it is.
Any questions? Move to approve it?
Yeah, move to approve except number seven.
All right. This move is a support? It's moved and supported. This is item seven. Any, any discussion on it? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, that takes us to Board Commissions and Courts.
Are there any reports of any city boards, commissions? Any reports? Well, there are none. Madam Clerk?
Good. Let's go to Appointment of Board and Commission Members. We do have one this evening. It's a council appointment of Deanna Versiglio to the Board of Appeals on Zoning, with a term to expire December 31st of 2021.
Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there, it's moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried.
Ordinance introduction. Our first one is to amend Section 92.08, Pyrotechnics of Chapter 92, Fire Protection and Public Safety of Title IX General Regulations.
We need a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This will be laid over under the Charter provisions. Madam Clerk?
Our second ordinance tonight is to amend Section 12.035, Planning Commission of Chapter 12, Boards and Commissions of Title I Administrative Code.
We need a motion to introduce?
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried.
That takes us to resolutions. We have one, Mayor. It is authorizing installment purchase contracts for vehicles.
We need a motion to adopt. So moved. Is it supported?
Support.
It's been supported. Any discussion? Councilman Wall?
Have we done this before? This is, this is new, something new. We used to buy vehicles, now are we going to lease them, or what?
No, this is an actual, a purchase of four vehicles.
Have we done it before?
Yes.
Yeah. That's all I want to know.
Yep. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried.
Mayor, you're at miscellaneous business.
Is there any other business to be brought before this council? Any other business? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Boy!
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.